By Scales. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next is open forum. Uh, we do have one open forum, so I'm gonna just read the guidelines for open forum. Uh, speakers must state their name. Each speaker will be provided three minutes. No action can be taken unless the matter addressed is formally on the agenda. Speaker will not make negative comments regarding any employee of the district. The board chair can end the open forum at any time. Please note that data privacy laws do not allow for any matters concerning individual employees or students to be discussed. Okay. Marvin? Yep.
This is my first time.
Welcome.
Um, my name's Marvin Sims. I am the youth wrestling coach, um, for Big Lake. Been doing it since roughly two thousand five. I came because I wanted to address that sixth graders are not being allowed to wrestle in junior high this year after almost twenty years of that being able to happen, and I just kinda wanted to go over some of the reasons why I believe that it really helps the wrestlers and the kids that are in that program to be able to do that. Um, I could go over all the ways that it helps them physically and stuff like that and the athletic side of it. That honestly isn't as important to me as like the social aspect, the, the discipline, the fact that a lot of those kids that we have, because wrestling gets a lot of kids that maybe are not, um, you're prototypical kids. I have some, I have some that are, uh, on the spectrum and stuff like that. And wrestling really gives them a chance to belong. And especially when they go to that, that middle school area. It, my, I have a son in middle school and I can tell you that moving to that middle school, when you haven't been there, it's such a big leap and you don't know where you belong. And being in that sport, especially because it's a lot of those kids only sport, because for whatever reason, giving them that ability helps them belong and be part of a group. Wrestling really, really is a family and that's what I kinda preach at that youth level and it goes all the way up and the more of those kids are able to do those things together. And we're seeing such a group of kids that are coming out in, say, sixth grade. They're coming into a room that when they're with their friends, they're meeting those older kids and they kinda make those relationships and it helps strengthen the program throughout the K program all the way through the high school. Not as prepared as I'd like to be. I kinda just, uh, speak from the cuff, but it's one of those things where to see them grow and see them open up and just see them enjoy it. I see it more when they're with, in that junior high area because they're a lot of times scared. So it's, it's just, I feel like it'd be sad and I'd be remiss if I didn't at least speak to the fact that it's a, it'd be a big blow to the program and to some of these kids to not have that chance to be together and get to know these other kids and have that togetherness and that thing that they do together. And you see it at every sport level, whether it's football, whatever it is. You know for a fact as well as I do that those are the kids that hang out and stuff like this. And some of these kids that are in my program, this is the only sports family that they'll probably ever have. So, um, I hope you get a chance to discuss and I hope that that is an option for the parents because I do have quite a few parents. I have one parent here, but a lot of them are at fifth grade concert or, uh, uh, choir concert and stuff like that. So I had a lot of parents that couldn't be here. But I really hope you get a chance to reconsider. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other open forums? Okay. Uh, seeing other open forums, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's the previous minutes from the October thirtieth regular board meeting, the November fourteenth special meeting and the November fourteenth work session. Uh, claims and accounts in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen thousand ninety-three dollars and seventeen cents. The credit card report, the personnel report, fundraisers, the MOU for the preschool teachers, part of the teacher's contract, the final reading of the listed policies below, an extended field trip request for girls' basketball and an updated hockey cooperative agreement.
Can we, uh, I'm sorry, probably should've done the four. Can we pull the hockey agreement for discussion or explanation?
Sure. I think I figured out what I was talking, I think what was, what it was, the question that I was talking to you about the other day. But yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, so I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding the MOU for, or the, um, hockey agreement.
Okay. Okay, motion made by Chabillon to approve the consent agenda, pulling the cooperative agreement with hockey. Um, and second by Sixberry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay.
I apologize, I thought it was a second. I, I didn't see that it was in the consent agenda earlier.
That's okay.
Tim, do you have that email I sent you? On it? Yeah, I'll just have to refer. Did you just have a question on that change?
Right, I, I, could you just, could you just, in your own words, give me, I mean, I saw the email, but in my, am I right? The biggest change that the gate fees will be taken by the association or the booster club now and so on, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you explain why that changed?
Yes, so, so how, yeah, how the Becker business manager explained it to me is when he initially met with, with the, um, Blue Line Club is that was, that was how, what they originally budgeted, because we, we all have, we all share the costs. They have some, we have some, and Becker has some. And so that is what they had budgeted, okay? And, and so for our purp-, and that's what, I guess, when Kevin and I went over the budget and like what was our cost and it, it doesn't change, because we had already had factored that in. It just didn't get into the contract. And so then, when I believe the superintendent or the Becker athletic director met with the Blue Line Club, they brought that up. So then Kevin redid the language and that's why we had to bring it back.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. I just wanna make sure that that was the only change.
And I didn't, I didn't understand the email, but then when I read it in here, it made more sense.
Oh, okay.
And I read the email and I read in there and, and felt like I understood, but I just wanted to just clarify. And then that was the only change I saw.
Yes, yep, it was just that, just that paragraph.
My understanding is they're keeping the gate fees because they, they provide the workers.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, correct.
And that has been the case.
That's been the case all along. It ju-, it ju-
Because as a, as a parent, no.
It just, they, they had asked that it be included in the agreement.
As a parent, I had to sign up for so many games to work, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, hockey cooperative agreement.
Okay, motion made by Chabillon. I can second. Second by Reasoner. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, on to donations.
I'll make a motion to approve the donations.
Motion made by Chabillon to approve the donations. Second by Scales. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Audit presentation.
As Caroline walks up here, so I'm gonna introduce Caroline. Um, she's from, can I say Bergen, Katie B? Okay. And, um, you, she's familiar to you, I, all I believe. She's been here a few years. She's our audit, um, partner. And so she's gonna present, um, a power, or actually, the PowerPoint. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So she, yep, there we go. She has a PowerPoint she'll go through and, um, yeah, and then we'll entertain questions.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. So yes, as I'm, as Angie mentioned, we'll just, um, take a few minutes and go through the results of the audit um, for two thousand and twenty-four. Yep, there we go. So the main reason you ask us to work with you is to provide an opinion on your financial statements. That opinion is housed, do I have this on? That opinion is housed within the independent auditor's report. So the independent auditor's report also discusses management's responsibility as well as our responsibility. So management's responsibility is for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with GAAP. What that means is they determine the numbers that are held within the financial statements. Then our responsibility is to conduct our audit, um, provide a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. Provide an opinion. It was green. Louder? Do I need to go a little louder? I can, I can, I'll go closer. Yep. Alright. Um, so the opinion that we're providing is an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level that you can receive, meaning we believe the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. In addition to going through the numbers, we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards and that requires us to consider internal controls as we go throughout our process. Um, so one item there we've touched on and talked about probably in previous years, I'm sure you've heard about it. Lack of segregation of accounting duties is just an item that is inherently present, um, for districts of your size when duties overlap. You are at a mid-level finding indicating that you have mitigating controls that help to reduce that. So just know that you are at that mid-level, um, because you do have controls in place that help. Another component, couple more components there. Um, because you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of federal expenditures, a single audit is triggered. Um, we talk about it in accordance with Uniform Guidance, but I'm sure you're more accustomed to the single audit language. Um, the programs that we tested, Education and Stabilization Fund as well as the PCN Grand, and there were no findings related to any of that test work. Yes, ESR is the other acronym. Yep, all sorts of acronyms we use, so.
That's what you hear me say.
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate that. Join all the lines together, right? Um, another component before we dig into the numbers is a final independent auditor's report in accordance with Minnesota legal compliance. So the Office of the State Auditor um, compiles Minnesota state statutes for us to ask questions about. We did not have any findings related to any of that either. So with that, we will move on to the financial analysis. With general education aid being your largest funding source as a school district in the state of Minnesota, we look at the two main drivers of that calculation, which is formula allowance and pupil units. So we start here with formula allowance, showing where it's been over the prior ten years, what we know currently based on legislature, but focusing on that two thousand and twenty-four line and the four percent increase that was received this year. Then we look at pupil units, next. So your resident ADMs are where we start, yep. Resident ADMs are where we start. So these are just the students living within your district. So for two thousand and twenty-four, resident ADMs um, did decrease for the year. And then on the next page, if we, there we go, thank you. If we apply the weighting factors that are at the top, as well as take into consideration open enrollment, we arrive at PUN served. And this is the amount that you're paid off of from the state. Um, so in total, PUN served decreased by forty. So again, that's the amount that you're paid off of from the state.
Yeah.
So just because I know, Amber, I saw you look up. Um, so remember this is for last year, because how I've talked about how it's increased this fall. I just wanna remind this is for last, for last year.
Alright, so here then we shift gears and we look at the actual numbers. And we start with the general fund sources of revenue. So in total, revenues in the general fund increased by about seventeen percent. And when, when we look at the various components, there are state sources increased, uh, most significantly probably. And a number of things come into play there. The formula allowance is one, um, special education entitlement is another, and then there were just additional new aids this year. So a few different factors there. And then local property taxes increased with an increase in the levy. And then the other category, the largest driver there was an increase in interest revenue. There were better market conditions this year on June thirtieth compared to last year. The next, next slide here looks at expenditures per ADM served. Um, that gives us an ability to compare to some state average information as well. When we look at two thousand and twenty-four, to start off, we do see an increase. Um, it really is the result of expenditures increasing and ADMs served decreasing. So just the components of that. Um, and when we look at two thousand and twenty-three, it's a similar story to what we've, um, discussed in the past and what you're seeing here for the previous years in that the district is below state average, but that is an average. So when we talk about that, we talk about all of the different things that can vary from one district to another. Um, the drivers that, that can change that. Um, demographics of your kiddos, the needs of them, so things like special education, compensatory aid, federal dollars, um, operating levies, those sorts of things can all change. No, that's more the revenue side, but that's really driving the expenditure piece because you're spending within your means. Next we have general fund expenditures, a pie chart format. Um, when we compare it to the previous year, um, really what we're seeing here, um, the instruction categories, which are the bottom three, the regular vocational and special education, consistent spending when we look at that, sixty-seven percent in both years. The Office of the State Auditor has put out sixty-five percent as a benchmark, so you're right in line with all of that as well. So pretty consistent spending year over year, less than one percent fluctuation from one year to the next in most of those categories. Here we have a budget to actual snapshot. The original budget is in the first column, anticipating an increase of about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. After some revisions, the final budgets in the second column, they're anticipating um, an increase of just under four million with the insurance recoveries being added in there. Um, and then actual results are in the third column showing the increase of six point, just under seven million. When we look at the fluctuations in the, or the variances, excuse me, on the far right column, see over budget there, that's two point four percent if you apply a percentage to it. Um, kind of easier sometimes to look at it from that perspective. Really the main driver on the revenue side is conservative budgeting on all of the components that we're seeing there. Um, and then on the expenditure side of things, under budget, again, if we apply a percentage, three, three and a half percent, so um, very close from that perspective as well. The next slide here, a little bit hard to see that way, but it pulls the general fund all together. We've touched on revenues, expenditures, and that change in fund balance already, and here we see total fund balance as well as all of the components related to that. We'll talk about it in a little bit more um, high level versus all of those individual ones, which is showing the detail, um, that is there for you. Um, so kind of starting at the bottom actually, non-spendable, um, that balance changed, you know, pretty consistent, changed by about twenty thousand. But that really is for items like prepaid or inventory, where the, you've spent the money already, so it's pulled out and separated. Um, then working our way up, there's our, there are a number of restricted components. These are all of those state funding mandates where you need to spend the dollars in accordance with how you received them. All of those components together, if we compare to the previous year, increased by, um, one point two million. So again, all of those different funding components that come into play. The committed and assigned are more internally earmarked items for, um, future spending that you've designated or you're planning for. So the assigned increased by, um, four point eight million there, and the largest portion there has to do, has to do with those insurance claims. So again, um, the money is in and you're waiting to, for the projects to happen. And then that leaves us with unassigned, and that balance increased by one point nine million. And that is the amount that you also compare to your fund balance policy, and your fund balance policy indicates that you would have unassigned fund balance of between nine and twelve percent of operating costs. You are in compliance with the policy you've established for yourselves. Yep. Um, the next slide is another way to look at fund balance, and this is unrestricted fund, um, fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted expenditures. And this is the SOD calculation. So again, it gives us the ability to compare to some state average information. And you see the increase for the year here in two thousand and twenty-four. And going back to two thousand and twenty-three is where we can see the comparison, so slightly above the state average there as well as for districts of similar size, but right in the same ballpark there. The next couple of slides look at both computed tax levy as well as tax capacity rates. So we start off here with the tax, um, the tax levy, showing the increase in the general levy and then the decreases for debt service and community service. And then the next slide shows the impact of, of that, along with, uh, market value changes and all of that that arrive to the tax capacity rate. So showing that tax capacity rate steadily declining here for the five years presented. The last two slides that we have look at your special revenue funds, so your food service as well as your community service. So here we have food service, um, showing the activity did increase both revenues and expenditures. Really the funding source, um, changed again this year, kind of in a third year of change, um, but fully funded through state and federal, um, reimbursements. And, and on the expenditure side of things, uh, just food costs rising, additional meal counts and capital purchases. So at the end of the day, fund balance did increase by about a hundred thousand, and end of the year at about nine hundred thousand. That's a very common theme that we've seen across the state in having these conversations, so. Community service fund is the last one that we have here. Activity increasing here as well compared to the previous year. Um, on the revenue side of things, there was an increase in the kids' club participation as well as a slight fee increase. And then also increased participation fees, um, some state aids, interest revenue, just kind of a, a number of different things leading into that. And then on the expenditure side of things, an increase in staffing costs as well as an increase, or as a result of that increased participation in the, um, kids' club as well as youth programming. Be happy to take any questions you might have, or if there's more for, to add.
Can I, yeah, can I just add?
Absolutely.
Couple of things I just wanted to add. So when Caroline was talking about like revenues were, um, like we were over budget, one of the big driving forces there was in special ed aid and, um, the co-op, so the tuition, because tuition billing comes into play there also with the sped aid, and the co-op was significantly less than the original budget, um, for various reasons. Um, but that was like six hundred thousand dollars of that variance, and I don't find that out till like June, July. So I just wanted to point that out. And then, um, TJ, I think, are you driving? Can you go back to that graph of the fund balances? Um, Caroline called it the SOD, keep going. Yeah, right there. Um, I wanna just point out that so our fund balance policy is based on, we call unassigned or fund balance available for operations. The state takes, like Caroline was saying, it's the SOD or statutory operating debt calculation. So it takes, it also takes like all the assigned fund balances. And one of the reasons for that large increase is we got all that insurance money, and I know you all know that, and, but we're doing the work this year. So we, we put that money in that assigned fund balance. So that's gonna go down next year. You know, I just wanted to point that out because it, it looks kinda odd that it went up so much, but part of it is just the timing. We got the money last year, we're doing the project this year. So I just wanted to point that out, so.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the task capacity piece?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go, yep, yep, good. Yeah, so, so as, as you all know, this was our, this was our message during the bond referendum campaign is that even though like on the previous graph, the levy was going up, but our task capacity rate is going down because essentially the levy is not going up as high as like the assessed values. And our goal, the board's goal is always to keep, well, of course, we'd love it to decrease or keep stable. We don't want it to go up. And that was the message during the campaign is that the board had chosen a level that it would remain stable. So, yeah. Yep, yep, good. Good point. I wanted to point that out too and forgot, so I'm glad you brought it up.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a statement Mr. Nelson sent in to read. Uh, dear fellow board members, Superintendent Trubinbach, and administration and leadership of the Big Lake School District, I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt appreciation for the incredible work I have witnessed and been a part of over the last two years. Serving as a member of the school board has given me firsthand look at the progress being made in key areas like communication, transparency, safety and academics. While there is always more work to do and the landscape continues to evolve, the steps we have taken and the foundations we've established have been nothing short of remarkable. I am particularly impressed by the thoughtful and diligent work put into keeping our district financially strong. Having spent considerable time learning about school finance, speaking with board members from other districts and comparing practices, I have even deeper appreciation for the exceptional efforts of Angie and her team. The recent audit services as a testament of the dedication and expertise, ensuring our district remains informed, prepared and healthy. It is no small task and their work makes all the difference. I am proud and thankful to be a part of this board and this team. The collaboration, commitment and vision each of you brings to the table are inspiring. Together, we are laying the groundwork for continued success and I look forward to building on the momentum we've created to achieve even greater things for the students and families we serve. With gratitude, Derek Nelson, Big Lake School Board Member. So.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, personally, thank you for what I see. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And then you just need us to approve?
Yes, just need a motion to approve that.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the audit.
A second.
Second.
Ashley said second. Oh, Ashley said second.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, motion made by Reasoner, second by Chabillon. Any other discussions? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Angie, you have the financial report next.
Okay. Well, we've talked about last year. Now we gotta talk about this year. So, yeah, um, spent the last few weeks, uh, um, doing, uh, budget revisions, updating enrollment and whatnot. Oh, I guess I should, I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. Uh, we'll start out, you can advance it there, TJ. We'll start off by talking about enrollment. Um, so I had to go back and revise the day one enrollments because, you know, during this first trimester, things are evolving. So anyway, I revised that number. Um, and then, so October first and November fourth, the key message here is that enrollment stayed stable, um, which is great news. And so our average ADM, average daily membership from September to November is three thousand one hundred and twenty. Um, I increased and you'll see that in, in the budget revisions because that affects gen ed aid. Um, so I increased the budget to three thousand one hundred, three thousand one hundred and seventeen, so it's increased at twenty-three from the original. Um, it's a little bit lower than, than where we're at now because it does allow, you know, sometimes we see, history's showing us, we see some drop off like after, after holiday, or after the, or, uh, thank you, December, yes, December day. Yeah, yeah. So it just, and, and you know, we, we watch it every month and, and if it goes the other way, you know, we'll revise it again. So, um, really been encouraged by, you know, we, you know, I always say we lose some kids, we gain some kids. And, um, I'm still seeing that steady growth in Big Lake online. So that has really been successful, you know, in, for enrollment wise, so. Um, so and this is shown graphically then on the next slide. I don't even know if I can see that. Yeah, so I, I, there are the yellow lines, the budget, so you can see we're a little bit above. Yeah, so that, that's where we're at with enrollment. And then you, you know, what's interesting is, is you can kinda see um, how like, okay, so like this year, we're, we're above last year. I'm looking at the October column. But yet we're not quite where we're at. Remember, we had that a lot of growth two years ago, but we're catching up. In fact, yeah, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, November first, we actually kinda catch up. Sorry, I was looking October. But in November, we're, we're almost at that level of two years ago, so we're coming back. So I think that's really positive. You can see that graphically, so. Anyway, okay, that being said, well, yeah, so I'm gonna start out by talking um, essentially my process when I, when I go through a, a budget revision. So on the revenue side, the two big, gen ed aid, and just talked about that based on enrollment. Um, special ed aid, I took a look at because we had an updated model. We use this forecast model from MDE. Um, other state aids, because like basically from last April, May, when I was doing the original budget to now, they, they got new aid reports out, so I look at those. Um, updated grants, and then investment earnings, uh, have, um, us business managers across the state are talking about, well, what are interest rates gonna do? And so we were advised to, um, budget twenty percent less than last year's actual. So when I did the budget revision, in our case, I actually hadn't budgeted enough. So even when I took the twenty percent reduction, I, it's still raised just a little bit, so just kinda tell you that, that process. Um, let's see here. Just adding budgets for field trips, donations and fundraising. And then also, um, Stephanie went through the community service fund, looked at enrollment and community ed programs and was, it was a positive adjustment in that respect too. So then on the expenditure side, this is on the next page. Biggest one here is staffing, um, because everyone's been hired, or we, I think everyone's been hired. And just adjust for, um, current hiring, what, you know, current salaries, benefits and whatnot. Looked at transportation because we, we had some adjustment in routes, you know, kind of like that first month, and then I'm looking at Tim because we talked about it quite a bit. And, um, we actually, we had budgeted more single routes in the original budget than what we actually have. So actually I was able to de- decrease that a little bit. Um, and then the other ones, the other big expenditures, tuition budgets, um, capital. Capital budget's just timing, it's just timing, like for curriculum. And, um, I always say project timing. We think it might get done one year, but then, because it's over the summer, then it goes, shifts into the next year, so those, those changes were made. Um, grant estimates, again, field trips, donations, fundraising, and then Stephanie did the same thing for community service because her enrollment's up, she had to adjust some of her expenditure budgets as well. So then if you keep going, so give you just the, I'm, I'm just gonna give you a high level overview, then general fund, revenues decreased, and you can see the numbers up there. Um, so yeah, the increase in gen ed aid was offset. I did bring special ed aid down again, but I'll probably be coming back to you with another estimate of special ed aid because that's always evolving. Um, expenditures decreased. Um, and then, so here, here's the number that, that we focus on, right, is that unassigned fund balance. Eight point eight nine million. Now with our fund balance policy, because it, it's the nine to twelve percent of unassigned expenditures, so our calculation, which is different than the states, the SOD calculation, so our calculation, which is different than the state's, the SOD calculation, so we're at 22%. So that's the number that you as a board want to look at, is that, so we're well in compliance of that unassigned, or of the unassigned fund balance policy. The other funds, again, like I mentioned, Stephanie went through community service. What I wanted to point out here is that, so total fund balance, 1.3 million. But what, the one fund balance we're concerned about is school readiness is, is negative because there's just insufficient funding to, to support that program. So the community education fund balance has to subsidize that. But fortunately, the fund, the entire fund is in a good financial condition that we can absorb, absorb that. But I just wanted to just mention that because it's something, it's something that we need or at the legislative level that, that needs to be dealt with because the funding is just not sufficient to provide good quality preschool programming. Let's see, other funds, just some minor adjustments. The building construction fund, this is timing. We thought, so that 2021, that's LTFM bonds. We, we did add some carryover projects into this year. That'll be all spent then. Food service fund, it just, it's just the staffing revision. I always wait a few months because I like to see a few months of participation and then I'll probably come to the board in January with that, with that food service. But one thing I did want to mention is, is that TJ, myself and Emily did get together and we, we updated like our capital equipment plan. So going to be a lot happening in that respect with replacing some outdated equipment. And then debt service fund just adjusted for revised day eight investment earnings. So, so there's the big picture. As you, you know, you see this every month. And I guess, let's see, what's the next slide? Keep going there TJ, do I have? Oh, yeah, okay. I did want to talk about looking forward to 2526. And I'm already a little bit worried. The last week, it's been the last week, I have been hearing rumblings, for lack of a better word, about the formula change for compensatory next year. I'll just give you a bird's eye, or high level view. It's going to be only based on what's called direct certifications and not paper free and reduced applications. I talked with a business manager on Monday that she's forecasting a 70, 7-0% decrease in her district. That's, it's millions for their district. And we had a meeting, we call it the MDE Masbo meetings on Monday, and they are still not releasing the numbers for next year, but they're getting a lot of pressure from us. So I did, I did get the sample formula, how to calculate it. So I'm going to go through that calculation, see if I can estimate it because I am a little bit nervous. That being said, when I look at our direct cert numbers as compared to last year, they're down a little bit, but not a lot. So I'm hoping, I, it's going to decrease, I think that I've resigned myself to. And that's one of the reasons why we have a fund balance in the, we have a restricted. I purposely did that because I knew this was coming. So, so stay tuned on that. And then, as I mentioned, especially cross subsidy aid, they had, they have a new formula model out. And actually, us business managers, our co-op business managers are getting together in a couple of weeks and we're actually going to go through that. So that's why I said I might be back to you changing that again. Because they've made some changes and I want another set of eyes looking at it along with myself. So, go ahead.
Because I know there was some talk, I mean, they're doing the whole harmless for a couple of years, but there's a chance that that go away completely or.
You're talking compensatory?
Compensatory.
Yep.
So is there, so I mean, are you still thinking it might go away completely or just go solely off a direct certification?
So here's what we've been told. So 2425, the current year was home, hold harmless. 2526, they're saying hold harmless at the state level. So that doesn't mean at a district level, the state. So in other words, if some districts increase and other districts decrease, that's what we don't know. And I think that's one of the reasons why they're not releasing the numbers yet. We normally know by the end of October, beginning of November, what we're looking at.
So can you, I tried to find it, I'm sorry, I couldn't. Do you have a number of what we get just for compensatory? Like what's?
Oh.
Just a ballpark.
Oh, yeah. Last year, we got, let me think here. 1.1.6 million? 1.7?
Just, just the, just the dollar amount.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
Broken out, so I couldn't tell which was which. So.
Yep.
So is the bundle of compensatory that is, the funding is in question at the state level. Currently, we get about 1.6 million.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And, and just to put this in perspective, well, one of the reasons it increased last year in 2324, and I know I talked about it, was, was because they have this Medicaid pilot project, okay? So at our lowest point, our compensatory was probably like 400,000. I'm talking in all the years I've been here. So it got as low as that, and then it started coming up. So like the highest prior to this Medicaid pilot project was probably 800, 850,000. So we got that huge bump in 2324, which is why I was able to carry over some of it because we weren't guaranteed that it was going to stay at that level because the state changed the formula. Does that help?
Very much. I like, I was just trying to get a better understanding of the actual dollar amount, that if this would go away.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, it, it won't, all of it won't go away. It's just, I don't know that we're going to get that much. Well, I don't think we're going to see what, what this school district, this business, yeah. She, she's, yeah, she's heartbroken because she said, we're going to have to cut. And, and like, we're going to have to start now. She was one that was kind of pressuring MDE, I need to see these numbers because here's what I'm coming up with. And then they did give the numbers to her and that it confirmed what she thought. So I, I don't think we will just because our direct cert numbers have not decreased. They're, they're down a little bit. And I will be making very sure that we have everything accurately in our Mars data. And I, I partner with Annie in our office to check that.
Is that right?
Say that again?
The direct certification, is that driven by Mars or is it driven on your end or is it outside?
So we get a file from MDE, so it comes from, so what, so how I understand it or how I think of it, I call it the computers in the sky. So there's data from MDE and data at Health and Human Services and they match. It's like the Mars data matches with, oh, sorry, the Health and Human Services data of, of like who's all eligible for Medicaid and SNAP and those types of programs.
So it's all done offsite?
Yep, yep, so, yeah, yeah, we don't, and so then we take that, then we take that data and then it's uploaded into our IC system. And, and like I said, I work with Annie, she's our Mars coordinator to, well, basically Annie and Brenda in our office and double check, make sure it's right. So, yeah, so I think that's all I had. If you go on to the next slide. Yeah, okay, so yeah, approve, so just asked for approval of the financial report and then the budget revisions as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget revision and budget report.
Okay, motion made by Chabillon. Second by Scales. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Onto one read and approval of policy 705 investments.
Okay, these two agenda items will be short. Okay, so the, the investments, as I had mentioned to the board last month, the finance committee had, had met. And one of the things that we talked about was approving, or, or, let me rephrase. Consider increasing the maximum percentage of investments in equity, in equities in the OPEB trust fund. So what we talked about is, is we, so the language change in here is we used to have shall not exceed 20% of the portfolio. We are recommending shall not exceed 40%. So, but what that means is we can't exceed that. What we talked about as a finance committee is that maybe we start out with around 30%, see how it goes. And, and I'm, Tony, did I miss anything? I just, yeah. So, so I'm just asking for approval. All we did, excuse me, is change that percent from 20% to up to 40%. And that's the only change. Yeah, yeah, the goal, the goal is to maximize investment returns in that OPEB trust fund so that money lasts longer to pay OPEB benefits.
I think it's important to note too for us, the board, that up to that 40%, the risk threshold.
Yeah. Yep, good point.
The risk was higher, so that's why we suggested that that would be the maximum.
Yep, yep, yeah, because, because we, we met with, or I had met with Kendra at PMA. And so, yeah, she, and then I provided that to the finance committee, the whole risk analysis. Because they're certainly not going to recommend 40% if it would be more risky for us. In fact, I think she recommended higher than that, and we kind of said no.
We said no.
Yeah.
We wanted the future boards to build the attitude to move into states if they felt like it.
Right, right. Right, so just, just need approval of the change in that policy.
Motion made by Scales. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Onto adopting workers' compensation coverage.
Yeah, so as I mentioned last month, just bringing this back before the board that our underwriter just needs a resolution from the school board approving workers' comp coverage for youth school board members. And as I mentioned last month, it's less than $100 cost for us, and I really felt it was important. You never know, if you go to a meeting or something and something happens, so. So, yeah, oh, if you want to, sorry TJ, can you put it, can you put the resolution up there?
For the board members, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
So we get injured here.
Until it happens to you.
Like 40 or 60% of your.
I was going to say, so.
So 40% or 75%?
I, I.
No, it's totally fine.
I, I mean, it's, it's up, it's up to you, really. I, I just wanted to bring it to you because I, I. I don't even think it's $100. He, Jay gave me, our insurance agent gave me the premium. I don't even think it was $100, but it, it's one of those, we, I mean, even our insurance agent thought school board members were covered. And we, when he talked to the underwriter, found out that they're not unless we have this, unless the school board approves a resolution.
Oh my goodness, does somebody make a motion?
Oh, make a motion to approve the resolution. School board members, our work is compromised.
Okay, motion made by Chabillon, second by Scales. Any other questions? Okay, since it's a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Chabillon?
Aye.
Scales?
Aye.
Reasoner, aye. Brown?
Aye.
Sixberry?
Aye.
The motion is approved, five nothing. Okay, thank you Angie.
Thank you Angie.
Yep. Next is set the organizational meeting date for January 3rd at 6:30 in the Middle School Student Center. With works, oh, January 6th, with a work session to follow.
Yes, I thought for a second we was going to be Angie all night long.
The Angie show.
But, yeah, so we, Kim and I just, it's the first Monday after the first, so I'm hoping that works for everyone.
It's a Monday, yeah. Chelsea, does that work for you, the 6th?
That's your.
That'll be your first meeting.
That'll be your first? January 6th.
At 6:30.
I think we are good. I think that's an action item, so we have to actually determine it, so.
Okay, so do we have to make a motion and all that?
6:30.
6:30. No, 6:30. So I didn't need to make a motion for that? Okay. I will make a motion to set the organizational meeting for Monday, January 6th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the Middle School Student Center with a work session to follow. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, school board committee updates.
Yes, Madam Chair, I don't think any of the committees met this month, except I think there was a Rite Tech meeting, right Amber? That's right, because I came, yes. Yeah, I did, I presented, didn't I? I did. I was there. Can you say that last part again, please?
Was your microphone on?
No, that's one here.
You did an amazing job. We were very impressed.
Completely lost it now, it's really, no. Right, yeah, I am very happy. It was, it was on, we talked about the process for replacing Brian.
Which I was not happy about, but.
Is he leaving?
Does Brian need replaced?
He's retiring, yes.
Oh.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not happy about that.
I was just going to say, you were, about the process or about Brian leaving?
The process or Brian leaving.
Oh.
Actually, I'd like to keep him and not go through it.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
He's our superintendent, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I have way too much experience with the whole hiring superintendent, so it's not allowed to go anywhere.
For at least four more years. So at least for four more years, so your, your term is there. Okay, so we have no other reports, no other committee things that met?
No, I had nothing.
Okay, we are on to Alexis, your report.
Hi, so this one, I actually have October's and November's report. So to start off with October, on October 23rd, Big Lake High School has Unity Day. We celebrated by students writing on footprints and creating a Unity Day team with writing students' favorite characteristics about themselves and then also how we can make our schools fully free. Our Big Lake High School's One App Play, our competitive acting program, has officially started and has been working hard after school to make their play perfect. Big Lake High School Dance Team season has started. They also have been working hard to put in the conditioning and start the season off good. And then Big Lake Robotics Team, in alliance with Becker McCory, took home their very first first place win at Conference Jams hosted at Big Lake High School. And then Big Lake High School Choir performed their first official concert on that Monday. Moving on to November, Big Lake High School had their first fall band concert. And they played a range of songs, including all of the classes that band has. Big Lake High School Student Council started their Sweet Tree for a Cause fundraiser in hopes to stop current hospitality at the high school for winter break. Based on a career survey at the end of the year, we have 32 students interested in joining the military. All 32 students were offered a chance to visit a military sponsored event at Camp Ripley to see firsthand examples of what their life could look like. 18 of those students attended that event. And then Big Lake High School Epic got to attend the very next day, the Youth Leadership Academy. They got to work with 10 other schools from Minnesota to talk about uplifting each other's voices in substance-free spaces. Big Lake High School Dance Team has their first competition on Saturday. And then the following Tuesday is hosting the very first conference of the season. And then for the Big Lake Swim and Dive Team, Senior Diver, Tori Rimmer was named Section 5A Diver of the Year and earned second place at Section Standing Off the State. And then last but not least, Big Lake High School's Marion Counselor, Ms. Fingersen, was awarded with Minnesota High School Counselor of the Year.
Thank you.
The numbers for military are really hot, like prior years. Just because being a military mom, like I pay attention to who stands up.
And there wasn't very many last year, yeah.
Not very many small numbers, so I hear that that's, I wonder, you know, where they should make that.
And I know personally, a lot of students that had the opportunity to go couldn't go because of like tests or college classes, so I know a lot more than just 18 wanted to attend that day.
That's a neat experience for them.
It's a great experience.
Yep, thank you Alexis. Okay, Superintendent Report.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I do have just a relatively short report. So, a couple of things. First of all, thanks again to Angie and her team. She did a great job. Really proud of what they do here, much of like what Derek said, they do an awesome job, so. I also want to mention some things about the fitness center. I know we had kind of started the school year off trying to keep things open. Just wanted to remind everyone that we are going to be reviewing the participation numbers for this fitness center. And our plan is to bring a more detail to the board formally in December. So that said, we do believe that not drastically adjusting the hours for the next couple of months is a wise choice just to see if the cold weather impacts and people want to participate in, you know, they're not able to walk or do things outside. So stay tuned for that information, but in December, when we come back, we will definitely have some more information to share with you about that. I also wanted to give you just an update. I forgot to mention this year, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm actually still actively involved in the Chamber of Commerce. So I just kind of wanted to update the board on that. I'm actually functioning, believe it or not, as the president. I'm actually functioning, believe it or not, as the president of the Board of Directors. So I run the meetings. I think it's because I have a, what did you say, my voice carries? I think that's, that's another word for you're a big mouth, Tim. Anyway, so I do, I do, I do run meetings and and actually we've got some great activities coming up. But I will just try to keep the board up to speed with some upcoming things. We do have, one thing to have on your radar is our annual community fair. Stephanie and I have been meeting with the Community Fair Committee. And that is on March 15th. I know that's a ways out, but it's a Saturday. So it's a big event. We get like 13 to 1500 people there. So it's a wonderful event and our community really comes together. It's a lot of fun, so stay tuned on that. But the Chamber does some really, really neat things for our community, whether it's the candidate forum or the monthly membership meetings or or block party in the summer and different things like that. So it's really a fun group and offers to be a great opportunity to network with the businesses. So it's one of my main contacts with them, so it's been great. Last but not least, for my, from around the district, I want to take an opportunity to acknowledge, unfortunately, this year, the LEA Award, which is Leaders and Education Excellence Award, which is teachers that were acknowledged, that was actually the same night as our alternate board meeting in October. So I could not attend. And those recipients were Kim Piachek, Scott Pierce, Lowell Street and Christine Lindgren. And then the ESS, the Education Support Staff People of the Year. That was actually yesterday and it was my wife's birthday. So unfortunately, I could not attend last night. But those recipients, you might recognize this first one, last name anyway, Sarah Gosman. So your mom was there last night, it's pretty cool. I saw a cool picture of that, so congratulations to her. But Sonia Ewerth, Kristen Krueger, Jenny Roy and Stacy Bregelmann. All very deserving. Many of these people are actually some of the bright spot recipients as well. So they are definitely acknowledged with their peers and it's really a neat thing. So be proud of these individuals because they do exemplify what we're all about here at Big Lake Schools. So that's good stuff. Onto the calendar, and I will send this out because we are action packed for December. We have, obviously, just want to remind people that on November 27th, there's no school because it's PD Day. November 28th, 29th is the Thanksgiving Day break. December 4th, Amber Blem meet and confer? Okay, so that one's at 5:30. We can talk if that does not work. And I have not received an agenda, agenda just yet, so I don't know if they'll be attending, if they even want a meeting or not. Also, as I mentioned before, some community things, events going on. Wanted to let people know that on December 5th, there's actually a City Christmas Tree Lady happening at 5:30, if you saw that.
It's the 4th, isn't it? It's Thursday.
I think it's, I think.
Thursday's the 5th?
Thursday, Thursday's the 5th, yep.
I don't know, I've written a flyer.
You said Armenian was the 5th, right? It wasn't the 4th?
Fourth. Okay. Middle school band concert. You got that one, 5th. High school holiday concert, December 9th. Awesome. Rite Tech Governing Board meeting changed this month to the 10th at 6:00 PM, right Amber?
Yeah, that's correct.
That is correct. And then we have our Governing Board for Special Education Co-op on the 12th at 5:00. Tanya, Middle School Choir Concert? Not sure if that one's you, too? Okay. Is also the 12th. 19th, action packed, it's going to be a great night here. We have World's Best Workforce, also known as the, well, actually newly known as the comprehensive. It is, it's a lot of stuff going on.
It's a lot of stuff.
It is stacked. So we've got Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Annual Meeting, also formerly known as World's Best Workforce. That's at 5:00. Then at 6:00, it's Truth and Taxation.
The Angie show?
The Angie show, that's good, for about a half hour. Because then at 6:30, we have our regular meeting, which is going to be awesome. So we've got our meeting stacked that night, but it's a big, big night. And it's just about after that, it's Christmas, our school winter break, starting on December 23rd through January 1st. So a lot of things, and I'll send these out in my weeklies as well. So really good stuff happening. I love this time of year because there's never a dull moment. Speaking of that, I do believe, I am curious if the board would be interested in having a work session in December around our activities. Because not only could we talk about maybe some of the wrestling things that were brought up during the public forum, but also get kind of a fall review as well as kind of take an assessment of some of the specific needs that are activities. Mark could be here, we could have more of an informal discussion, give and take conversation. And I did check with him earlier in the day. And he had a couple of the two middle Wednesdays, December 11th or December 18th. So I'm wondering if one of those days might work for a December work session so that we could have a kind of wrap up the fall season, intro the winter season kind of discussion with.
I am available both the 11th and the 18th.
I can make either one work?
You are too.
Either one? Wow.
Well, that never, that like never happens.
So Wednesday, so Derek should be there, too.
Yep.
Because he said that Wednesdays are good, so let's go with.
The 11th is a Wednesday?
Yes, they're both Wednesdays. Is that not going to work? Maybe. Well, is the 18th for sure?
18th is for sure.
Then let's go with 18. But just know that from that work session, we wouldn't be able to necessarily add anything for the 19th board meeting because that's not enough notice for the agenda. Just, just know that. But it'll be a good learning, capture some information and understand activities world. So we will go with December 18th. And we will have December 18th, no, work sessions, yes, next door, work sessions in the tall tables. 6:30.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. I'm going to make the announcement for our closed meeting. The meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.03, to discuss the Big Lake Schools' labor negotiation strategies. The closed meeting will commence in five minutes at 7:32 in the Middle School Student Center. So we'll need to adjourn this meeting first. Motion made by Scales, second by Sixberry, any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose, the motion carries. Meetings adjourned.